So I want, we wanted to frame this presentation under the missions of the Community College. And economic and workforce development is one of the three primary missions of the community colleges, in addition to transfer and basic skills. This is the mission of the economic and workforce development, to invest in California's growth, global competitiveness, training and services, all that we've just mentioned. And this ties us to, I'm sorry, this is a pathway I'm leading you in here. This is our new strategic plan, which you will get to hear shortly, hopefully. And it is, so economic and workforce development is under goal three of our strategic plan. And it is align educational programs with workforce development. So these are the key industries that have been identified in the Long Beach region here. Advanced manufacturing and technology, advanced transportation and renewable energies, international trade and logistics, healthcare, cybersecurity, and of course, retail, hospitality and tourism. So tonight, we're going to talk about the two separate things that we offer. So I'm really representing career technical education, credit and non-credit programming. Non-credit program, we don't have a lot right now, but we do have an adult education consortium, which we receive money from the state. And Long Beach City College, we're in partnership with the Long Beach Unified. And we will be building up the adult education, which in our nomenclature is non-credit education. So we'll be building that up in the near future. So I want to talk about the credit and the not, well, mostly the credit, because we don't have any non-credit in career technical education right now. So what we've prepared for you here is an overview of the career technical programs in my division. So this, there are others, and each one of the other divisions, and several of the other deans are here this evening. So nursing is in Paul's area. I'm not sure what the other ones are in the other areas, but the deans could tell you. Teri can tell you. But this is what our, it's an area, this is, this is the trades and technology that you'll see up here. And the technologies are involved in it. And then I've also shared for you, and you have access to this, the employment. So again, tied to what we offer in the region. The red means that it's something that we're working on. It's something that we'll be adding to the program. These are the other programs that we have. Administration of Justice. We have a very large program, child development, computer office systems. When I was here before and spoke to you about the skills builders, we talked about COS and how they're very clearly aligned with the labor market in the region. Construction Technology, Culinary. We just saw the review of the new culinary, beautiful culinary arts building. We're building that program out significantly. Family Consumer Sciences, Fire Science. We're creating a Fire Academy, Human Services, and then Horticulture. And Horticulture, as you heard, was being expanded. And they'll be building some, creating some new programming in that area. These are the certificates and degrees that we offered this last year in the career technical education in the entire college, right, Teri? Yes. And now Melissa's going to talk to you about what she offers in her area.
Good evening, trustees. You'll have to forgive me. I have a cold and I'm a little squeaky, so I'll do the best I can. As Molly said, that in workforce development, we're offering the not-for-credit programming. So this includes the contract education piece, which is really employer-driven, and we're partnering with employers in the region. Fee-based, where individuals are opting in to pay for a course or short-term training, which is provided by grants. These could be federal, state, several of which we have and I'll talk about shortly. And we're self-funded in workforce development. I've included a couple slides with highlights of some of the larger programs that we have right now. We have a pre-apprenticeship construction program, and also Heavy Duty Preventative Maintenance and Alternative Fuels Program, which are housed under one of our federal TACT grants from the Department of Labor. With our pre-apprenticeship program, this is a partnership between the Building Trades and also PG-Win, which is a workforce investment network here. It's a six-week course, excuse me, 160 hours. We offer it in partnership with the CTE program. Participants will receive their OSHA certificate CPR and the Multi-Craft Curriculum, which is something that the Building Trades actually identifies as their industry-recognized credential. These trainees are then set up directly to be part of a pipeline into pre-apprenticeship programs. And we have great partnerships with a lot of the project labor administrators, as well as the direct unions. And we meet irregularly and are having our employees interview with them, or rather, our participants interview with them as we speak. The Heavy Duty Preventative Maintenance and Alternative Fuels Program is a partnership with Republic Services. And this really helps to take people into a maintenance technician-type of position, working potentially on large trucks, like the waste management trucks. Also, they could be working in, excuse me, such occupations at our transit authorities. This is a three-week course. And they're also receiving their fuel inspection, inspector certification preparation. And again, this is part of the TACT grant. Overall, we're expected to train about 800 people with this grant. This is in full swing right now. On the next slide, you'll see the linked supply chain management, which is also funded by a Department of Labor TACT grant. And this is part of a larger consortium with several colleges throughout the nation. We partner with the Council of Supply Chain Management Professionals. And individuals are able to take individual tracks and at the end can take a course and receive an industry-third-party, industry-recognized third-party credential through supply chain management professionals. This is all about global trade and logistics. And so it's supply chain management, warehousing, and you name it. And this is an area, actually, we're really excited to build on, off of what we're doing with the grant, and actually expand a lot of work for contract ed and also fee-based work, because this is really an identified area of growth in the region. We do have a very successful commercial truck driver training program. This was started several years ago. We did it in partnership with the Harvard Trucking Association, but are now expanding it. And actually, we just received a grant from the chancellor's office to create an employer consortium, which will then actually wean this program off of our grants and really partner with industry to have them invest in this and continue to have it be a successful program, supporting the port. And lastly, I'll mention our alternative fuels programs. These are both employer-driven, and they are contract ed or also fee-based. And they're done in partnership with the CTE program out of our Advanced Transportation Technology Center here on campus. So forgive my voice. I also have additional details and numbers if you do have questions.
So the future for career technical education, workforce development, again, our job by definition is to become better aligned with and expand our network of business and industry and who we work with within the community. We also, I'm sure you're aware that the SB, I think it's 830, was just passed, which was the funding bill that went along with the BOG Task Force recommendations. And so that implementation is going to be happening. We have to create a regional plan, which we're starting to work on in the LA Basin with 25 colleges. So we'll create a regional workforce and economic development plan. And it is our recommendation that we also create a workforce and economic development plan for Long Beach City College. So we'll be working on, Luann and Teri have talked about that, and we'll be working on that in the future and bring that back to you at some point in the future. That's our presentation. Any questions?
Questions from the board, comments?
I have a question. Trustee, President Otto?
Trustee Zia.
Well, first of all, thank you so much to both of you. What a great presentation. Particularly, it's nice to see a unified presentation. I like that. And perhaps you can help me understand some of the, these areas. By the way, I have been asking for this report since November of last year. And I appreciate how much thought and effort has been put into this. You guys have a, you have a, I think it's an overview of the certificates. How many are we giving out? Some are in red, some are, I don't know if there's any significance in that. But my biggest question is, are we tracking how the impact of our programs are, what is the impact in the community, in the, in this ecosystem of students where we have them come in? Are we tracking how many get employed? What percentage, what industries? How, is there a mechanism in which we do that?
Well, up until now, we, meaning we, the community colleges, in general, have been tracking, of course, our awards of certificates and degrees. But now, and part of the, we've never tracked employment, although it did, we were, we did track it through Perkins. It wasn't very good data. But now we're going to actually be tracking that. And the chancellor's office and the BOG Task Force are going to pay that. So now we're going to see who gets employed. And we're going to see then that the, we're going to be evaluated based on employment and wage gain. So that's something that's being put into place. But we've really never had, I mean, it's expensive to do that. So we've never, some programs do that. I know nursing does it and some programs that are certified. But it is something that is, it is happening in some colleges around the state. And it will be happening in all of them here in the very near future.
Okay, how are we doing that? Melissa, I think you wanted to speak as well on that. Yeah, my question was for both elements. And maybe we can make the distinction of workforce versus career technical education. And then mainly, it's how are we tracking the success of it as it relates to employment of our students in the job markets?
So I can speak for workforce development. Our data tracking system is physically separate from what the student database is in the college. So we're actually implementing a system right now, but have been tracking specifically because so much of it is grant-driven. We are expected to train a certain number of people, place a certain number of people in employment. And then in many of the cases, the grants actually require us to look at what the wage gain is. So we're having to track that for many of our grants. Since I've arrived, we've been in the process of moving over to a system called Salesforce. So currently, we've really used Excel spreadsheets to manage a lot of this data. And so there isn't one database historically for workforce development. And so I'm excited that we're moving forward with that internally. We do have a lot of that data in bits and pieces in workforce development. However, as it's tied to very specific grants, we're always reporting on that as well. That's a priority for me. I'm also on the Workforce Investment Board as a board member there. They're very focused right now on a skills gap analysis for the region. It's something I care about and I think is tied to the work we're doing and will continue to do. It's something they, as an organization, are also very focused on. We partner with them either to provide training, or they provide us case management support services. When they do that, they also track our participants' data. And so we're both tracking that. So we have lots of data. One of the challenges that I'm excited about taking on that we're moving forward with is really managing the data and doing that in a systemized way, so we can report it out in a meaningful way to trustees and leadership.
Okay, and I get asked this question all the time from my constituents, particularly of the programs that have been discontinued. And one in particular that is, always keeps coming up, and I know there's a deficit in the industry for skilled welders and welders who have degrees and certificates. Are we doing anything to provide that? Or I know there's been debates that, hey, we offer the courses, but I'm talking about specifically when it comes to degrees. An AA perhaps, or a program for welding. What are we doing to address that?
I can speak to that. So the best news I have to share with you, trustee Zia, about this, is that we just hired two full-time faculty, one to teach sheet metal and one to teach welding. So we are adding to our full-time faculty group next year, a full-time sheet metal and a full-time welding faculty member. That in and of itself tells you that there is a need for us to continue to work on our certificates in those areas. So we have existing certificates in mechanical maintenance. We have certificates in advanced transportation that of course require those courses as part of the certificate or degree program. When we get these two new faculty in, which we desperately need, because our classes, as you said, we're offering the classes, they are full, these faculty will help us develop in conjunction with the advisory boards, which will tell us what we need to do and what kind of courses we need to package to best serve the workforce around us. So I think it shows a great commitment. The college is showing a great commitment in that we are hiring two new faculty in the trades, specifically, like I said, sheet metal and welding. And those faculty will help us develop the certificates that we need to meet the workforce needs. But like I said, we do absolutely, as you said, you've heard, we have those courses as part of existing certificates. We just don't have an associate degree in welding, nor do we have an associate degree in sheet metal. And the question would be, we will ask our advisory board members, do we need those associate degrees? Or should we be developing stackable certificates so that students can move through a sequence of courses and get placed into the job market? And so we are very much on top of that right now and very, very excited to have the new faculty join the Trades and Industrial Technologies Department.
Right, we certainly appreciate that.
You need to go through the chair.
Okay.
And I was just going to make a comment.
Sure, I'm not done with my questions. If you don't mind, I still have questions on the presentation.
Get to ask them.
Do you want me to wait until you ask your questions? Sure.
I just want to clarify something. It was my understanding that some of the programs that we've instituted, the certificates and whatnot, came out of our consultation with industry. And that, for example, I think at the port, we worked with the port to come up with what it was that they needed job-wise. And the advice that we got was that they didn't need an AA in welding or sheet metal, but they needed that as part of a package. Is, am I?
Yes, I think I'll let Melissa explain that, what we're doing. This is our, this is what we're calling a mechanical maintenance program with the port. It's not only with the port, it's with labor. And the whole purpose is to put together a program of courses that provide the skill sets that they need for the workers who may be transitioning out of some jobs into more mechanically-inclined or alternative jobs. And so it's a little electrical, it's a little welding, it's a little construction. And it just depends on the client. In this case, the client would be the port and, and not necessarily the port, it's labor and the terminal operators. But the point is that they need to have very specific things for specific reasons. And so we respond to that in a need. If we just were to put a degree program in place in an area, it may not necessarily be what that particular client needs at that time. So it's a customized program.
Yeah, I know that the state is very committed to workforce job creation and a strong economy. When they put this task force together, you know, a couple of years ago, it was a direction that they said was extremely important. And in fact, it's become so much more important that, as evidenced by the fact that they just allocated $200 million to do this kind of work. In fact, there was a reasonably good fight in Sacramento not too long ago about how that $200 million was going to be allocated and how much of it was going to go to the regions to set up what some people thought would be yet another bureaucracy, because we have some things in place now. When a lot of the money had been pulled away from career technical education programs in the relatively recent past because of the recession, and there was pent-up demand for these courses on campuses that there was no funding for. And so I know a lot of people, a lot of districts were saying, why don't the first year you give us most of it and to ramp up these classes again? So that, because we've got people that want to be in these classes. And next year, work a little bit more on the network. And I know that the governor, it was very hard to win anything against. We sought, I think the colleges sought 90% of them, $200 million, to go directly to the colleges. I think it wound up being 60/40, which is what the governor wanted in the first place. But, but the idea behind it is that this whole career technical education concept is in a sentency, that it's been picked out by the governor and the state. The legislature has been one of their top priorities for what community colleges should be doing. And it's evidenced by the fact that they're throwing money at it.
May I proceed with my?
Sure.
Questions? I appreciate the overview and insight, President Otto. And I think that's fantastic. And you know, I have to tell you that I've gone to these conferences and I've heard people analyze at the point of no return. It's almost like analysis and paralysis. And I'm a simpleton. I like to keep things simple. I like to see how it's being spent, how it's being allocated. I don't, I have, I run out of patience when there's so much talk. I want to see things produced. So that's why I'm asking, how, where are we at? You know, it's one thing to throw money at these great sexy talking points, but it's how is it, what's the impact? How are we contributing to the lives of our students and the community in monitoring their employability? I mean, what, how are we setting them up? Those are some of the touchpoints and certainly some statistics that would be wonderful to see. I, like I said earlier, I have every confidence. I'm very happy that you're here, Melissa, and also you, Molly. I've heard great things about both of you. So I'm excited to see what kind of things you will create within our institution. For what it's worth, I think it would be great to really track the, how are we, how are these folks getting employment? What are we doing to support them? And I'm sure you're already committed to that and working on that. It would just be nice to see the statistics. And you know, trustee Otto, you mentioned there was analysis done in the job market. How, how long ago was that? As far as the career technical education programs, was that?
I know there was a lot of analysis done during the middle of the recession when we had to make tough decisions about how to spend our money.
What year was that?
I think it was 2012, 2011.
Okay, so that was like about five years ago, maybe? Four years ago? So you know, like you, Luann was saying, things are very dynamic. Things move, it's evolving, industry's evolving. So I'd certainly like to see more up-to-date information personally to see how we're monitoring that. The other question is a little bit.
Excuse me, I don't think that jobs necessarily go away over in a short period of time.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, in real time, are we tracking versus going based on old data?
Can I, can I address that?
Sure.
Trustee Zia?
Sure.
So one of the things that is required of all CTE programs is that they have an advisory committee meeting every year. And the intent of that with respect to CTE is that we, we reach out to the employers in the area for a particular discipline. And we ask the question, how are we doing? What does, what do you think about our curriculum? Is there something we need to do differently? Has your job changed such that we need to make the changes internally? And those are things that each one of the disciplines in CTE must do every year. It's mandated by the chancellor's office. So we can't slack off and we can't not be current. So one of the things that's coming out of that is we're developing a new advanced manufacturing program. So we're looking at integrating our existing programs into something that will better serve the workforce. The thing I will say to you, and not to, you know, put a damper on the, with the way we do things in credit, we have to go through a curriculum approval process. And it doesn't happen overnight. So we're working on some new curriculum. We're working on some new certificates. But I think what would make you, I mean, maybe make you understand better, all of those meetings that we have, those discussions at, we look at what the workforce demands are. We look at what we're doing and make adjustments to that. But let's say we had a meeting tomorrow and they said, hey, you need to develop this new class. We could do that over the summer. We could get it into curriculum next year. It would absolutely not be ready until the following year. That's where in credit, it's a, we're a little slower to respond. And it's one of the recommendations of the task force, that we figure out how to fast-track, if you will, curriculum for credit CTE, because we need to respond quicker. And we're, and we know that, and we've acknowledged that, and the task force acknowledges that. Melissa and her area can respond much quicker because they're not going through that process. And I think that that is also allowing them to track a little bit better. But we will be tracking, and we do have that data. I mean, the advisories do come back and say, hey, we've hired four of your students in cybersecurity this year. You know, you changed your curriculum, we produced the certificate holders, and they hired our students. So we have that data. We just don't have kind of a data warehouse that we can share with you. But I think it's part of what we must do with the task force recommendations, with the regional CTE plan, with the plan that we're going to have locally, and the strategic plan that we're developing with workforce development, which I think is, you know, really putting us, integrating what we do in the not-for-credit and the credit side to better serve the, the community that we live in, so.
Trustee Zia, if I could just add something to that too, because I think it's important about this whole issue of alignment. One of the things that we look at is what we can do in workforce development to take a not-for-credit kind of training and beta-test it, work out the kinks, give the faculty and the departments time to be able to look at it, assess it, work with us, and then make the right kinds of decisions, whether or not it would be appropriate to take a not-for-credit kind of training and move it into a career pathway in a credit-based program. So part of the alignment that we're talking about is just that. That also fits in with the whole thing about guided pathways in careers and developing multiple opportunities for students to be able to have different kinds of opportunities within a discipline and a set. And we've done that in the past. And that's part of what our strategic work will be, to take a look at those and see, how can we help kick-start capacity from a grant-driven perspective or a training perspective and see that it is able to transition into a credit-based program?
Yeah, and I think that one of the things that they recognized in this field was that a real bottleneck was the chancellor's office. They didn't have enough people approving courses. And all of a sudden, what, you know, if you wanted to be nimble, you couldn't be nimble, because it would go and sit there for six months, because they didn't have enough people to really go through it. And so one of the recommendations out of this strong workforce report was that they find ways to accelerate the approval of courses, because it was creating the kinds of problems that we're talking about. And I know they've, they're doing, made some progress. I note that another one of the recommendations was, and I'm quoting now, improve the quality, accessibility and utility of student outcome and labor market data to support students, educators, colleges, regions and employers, local workforce investment boards and the state in CTE program development and improvement efforts. So it's on their radar. The question is, how are they doing? And, and that's why I think that this task force and the money that's been allocated has been so important to identify this as a, really a top priority of the state for community colleges.
I also wanted to ask, what are we doing to look inward? I know we're going to have a lot of construction projects. Are we doing anything to employ our own students, provide internships for them, to hire them onsite, or provide some sort of practical training for them, given that we're going to have $850 million worth of work? Have we looked at that? Is that a possibility? And the last question I have is, what are the distinctions between the certificate of achievement? I think it's a, there's different achievement and then completion. If someone can explain that to me. I believe it's the associate degree certificate of achievement, certificate of accomplishment, certificate of, certificate of completion slash competencies. These are, again, I'm a simpleton, so perhaps someone can shed some light on that as well.
Sure, Teri.
So by definition, a certificate of achievement is greater than 18 units or greater, and it must be approved by the chancellor's office. A certificate of accomplishment is less than 18 units, and it does not need to be approved by the chancellor's office. And the completion or, what do we have on here? I'm looking at it.
Competency.
Completion or competency. Those are usually one or two classes that make for a very low unit value certificate. So it's, it's basically a tiered system. Certificates of achievement and all associate degrees must be approved by the chancellor's office. So we must submit, as Doug was talking about, our curriculum with, you know, the goals and the outcomes to the chancellor's office. And they are getting much, much better in terms of the turnover time. They've got more staff and they are doing a better job at getting the work done for us. Sometimes it's on our end that's a little slow.
And we're tracking the statistics based on these different tiers?
Yes, I have, I have all the completion data for all CTE certificates and degrees right here in front of me. So if you wanted to throw one out, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, we have the numbers for you over the past about six years. But we could track back further if you wanted. So we have the numbers awarded each year.
And then my question about the construction projects that we're going to have and seeing how we can employ our own students.
Well, I can talk about that from my perspective. I was very excited when the bond passed and when there was a PLA put in place, because that meant local hiring. And we've got local folks that are going through our training program. So one of the things that we are currently doing with the port and with the city, since they do have these local hire requirements in place, is we meet with the business service director, the PLA administrators, and we have a monthly meeting along with PG-Win. And we talk about their needs, what jobs are coming up, how many apprentices that they can take, how many slots are open. And then we, as we're graduating classes, we almost have two classes running at any given time on campus. given time on construction. We have our instructors recommend individuals who are in the top of the class, and those resumes are then given to the PLA administrators for the port and the city to actually interview them. And today, Marlo, who oversees this work in our office, was sitting at PG-Win with the Parsons folks to actually interview some of our top candidates. Some of them have been hired already. So I would love to include the college in that process, because it's been really successful. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.